Kate, may we have the roll call, please?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Sean Kier.
Here.
Miles Lessinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here. Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
No, there aren't.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for our meeting on September 4th?
I submit that we approve the minutes for the last meeting.
Is there a second? I second. All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Now's the time for public comments on non-agenda items. I think we probably will not have any this evening. Going to final orders, resolution, and written communications. We have a final order for 2018-03, the Lincoln Palisades Phase Four Final Master Plan. So the commission is about to vote on a final order concerning the final master plan and tentative subdivision for Phase Four of the Lincoln Palisades planned unit development. The applicant and property owner is Alpha Building Ventures. The final order is a written record of the commission's decision that followed its public hearing deliberation and tentative oral decision made on September 4th, 2018. The planning commission's decision is to approve the request with conditions. A final order reports the findings of the commission explaining how the decision relates to the evaluation criteria. It includes the voted beach member and briefly states the basis for any minority vote. The vote on a final order is not meant to be a second vote on the subject of the hearing. If the final order accurately reflects the findings in the majority and the decision, commissioners should approve the final order. Is there a motion to adopt Final Order 2018-03 for the decision on file PUD 2018-02?
I motion that we accept the final order on 2018-03, Lincoln Palisades Phase Four.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And I think we can, all of us were here except you at the last meeting, so if you have seen the video and read the packet and read the minutes, you're welcome to vote.
Okay.
So you've done that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. McFarland?
Yes.
Kier?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Lessinger?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Crowen?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
A note of decision will be mailed to the applicant, property owners, and all others who participated in this hearing in person or in writing. This decision is appealable to the city council. All right. Going forward, we now have public comments on the Imagine Lincoln City vision statement, and we're continuing our discussion and the public comments from our meeting on September 4th. Richard, did you want to do an introduction to our discussion?
Yes, if I could, please. Introduction to introduction, or preliminary before the introduction. I know there was suggestion that the project team meet, or the vision team meet, and we emailed the vision team, all sixteen members, and we only got replies from two members. One said yes, one said no. So I took that as pretty resounding, they weren't interested in another meeting, since only one-eighth of the people on the committee responded. We did ask for comments. We had sent out about seventeen hundred emails, I think, in the e-blast, asking for comments. Posted on the website, asking for comments on the city's website. There were press releases, it was mentioned on the radio, there were articles in the paper, it was in the city manager's report. And as you know, you have before you all the comments, all the written comments we got, and there were only four comments that we've got. You have them either in your packet or at your desk tonight. But I wouldn't take that as a lack of interest in the project. You know, this has gone on for several months. We got actually thousands of ideas from people. And the vision statement that's before you now is a distillation of that. If I can go sort of from the, sort of from the bottom up, you know, as I said, we got thousands of ideas from people. And those were then distilled into the community ideas that are in the vision statement. Those are organized under individual initiatives, where they seem to have a theme, and then the individual initiatives are organized under ten focus areas, each of which has a goal. And then overall of the thing is an overall vision statement itself. So that's going from the specific to the general. One thing I think to keep in mind, and this may be where some concern has come up, the vision statement is not a plan. It's just a statement of vision. It's like an intent of where people want the community to go. The community ideas in there, actually the consultant had wanted to call them actions, and we thought that was not appropriate because they're really not actions that the city intends to take. It was just ideas that people had. So we had, we called them community actions. They're not, it's not a list of actions that the city will take, or might take, or even things are good ideas. It's just the ideas, they're ideas that people came up with, that we distilled down from, sort of combining the ones that we got multiple things on, or variations on, combining it down to make it manageable list. They are not, well, the vision statement is part of what is going to be guiding the comprehensive plan that we're developing. Those community ideas will not be in the comprehensive plan. What will go into the plan will be the overall vision, the ten focus area goals, and the items labeled as initiatives. Now, it may not go in verbatim. There's a lot of massaging that needs to go on, because as I said, this is just one piece of the many things that are going to help form the comprehensive plan. For instance, there'll be a lot of background materials other than this, just general background, city history, other things. There's a lot of things, like in the economic opportunities analysis, there's four pages of policies in there that the city council adopted to be part of the comprehensive plan. Transportation System Plan also has pages of goals and policies also adopted by the city council that were adopted to be part of the comp plan. Parks and Recreation System Plan also adopted. But like in the Transportation System Plan, the Parks and Recreation Plan, there are some very specific things, specific roads called out, specific parks called out. Those pieces will not be in the comp plan. What will be in there is the goals and policies, not the specific implementation ideas.
Can I ask you a question about that? But in our work on the comprehensive plan, we would, is our goal to come up with zoning that would permit these initiatives to be implemented if the city so chose to implement?
I'm not sure what you mean by come up with zoning. So what the comprehensive plan, it will consist of basically of two things, a narrative with goals and policies, not specific implementation ideas, but goals and policies. There also will be a map, that right now, our comprehensive plan map and our zoning map are the same, but the intent is that we won't have that, we'll have different maps. And the comprehensive plan map will be more aspirational where we want things to go, like the idea of the kinds of uses, not the zone necessarily, but the kinds of uses that would be allowed everywhere within the urban growth boundary.
Excuse me, Richard? Then, I'm a little confused here. So is this supposed to be something we can implement through the comprehensive plan, through the codes, ordinances, zoning? Is this to feed that, or are those things to be evolved based on this?
This will feed into the comprehensive plan, and actions that the city takes through its ordinances and through its budgeting and so on has to be consistent with a comprehensive plan. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the individual items listed, like, again, the community ideas are ever going to happen. But the main thing is that those policies and goals that are adopted, and that's the key thing, adopted, the actions the city takes has to be consistent with those items. I don't know if that answers your question.
Again, I'm looking at how this, this vision, if it feeds the comprehensive plan, does it feed it saying, these are the things we need, we need to address zoning and ordinances, policies, et cetera, based on this? Or are they already in place that this feeds, and through that, it is executed?
Typically, when you get a new comprehensive plan, you end up revising especially your zoning ordinances to be consistent with them. Because you may have changed policies and practices, changed intents. So for instance, one area of the comprehensive plan will focus on housing, and as a result of that, some things that are, you know, some goals and some policies, we may need to amend some of our ordinance provisions to be consistent with those goals and policies once we have the comp plan in place. So again, I want to emphasize too, the vision statement that we have is one item that's background for this. I can tell you, we have, I've started pulling things together and putting it together, started drafting provisions. We've got the economic opportunities analysis and housing needs assessment, Parks and Recreation System Plan, Transportation System Plan, Walking and Biking Plan, the Visitor and Tourism Assessment, which is also, you may have heard, referred to as the Brooks Report, Nell Scott Gap Neighborhood Plan, Cutler District Community Vision and Corridor Plan, Ocean Lake Redevelopment Plan, Nell Scott Community Vision Plan, TAFT Redevelopment Plan, Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, Asteroid Management Plan, Local Wetlands Inventory, the Beat the Wave, I'm hoping the Beat the Wave materials that we're going to get will be in time, and our Tsunami Evacuation Facilities Implementation Plan, is that what TFP stands for? Yeah. So that can feed into it. So pulling all these things together, this is a big piece, the vision statement is a big piece, but it's not, it's not the only piece, and there's a whole lot of things that come together. On the economic development side, again, I've got, we've got four pages of policies that are already adopted. The vision plan is generally consistent with that, and we'll be able to meld the two together and other materials that we're going, that we have as well, to have a cohesive comprehensive plan.
And most of the items you listed have gone through review by the planning commission and approval by the?
By the city council. Yeah.
So, all of these policies and plans that have already been accepted, have you gone through the vision document and done the analysis to cull out those things which are inconsistent with the already accepted plans?
No. But again, if you're thinking of like the community ideas, the specific actions that people are calling out, that's really not where we're going with the comp plan on those items. Those are ideas that sort of form the context for how we got to where we got on the, what's called initiatives, and they may not be the best word, the initiatives and the goals and the overarching vision for the city as a whole.
Right. And I understand that. Here's a big concern I have, that the analysis of all of those ideas that are in there, some of them have already, in the vision plan, have already been done.
Right.
Some of them are conflicting with one another, some of them are, I suspect, probably illegal.
Right.
Some of them are economically not viable. So the longer that you carry forward a document with untenable items in it, the more complicated it becomes for the public to understand what's happening to those things. So I'm, I would like to have seen that analysis done before the vision plan is sort of finalized, if you will, so that it's very clear, things that have already, and I think in a certain, to a certain degree, things that have already been done could be waived, hey, we've already done this, we're doing this, or we have, you know, we're, we're in the process of doing that, so that people see that there is some movement on some of those items. But I'm concerned with a wish list that has some inconsistencies in it and hasn't, hasn't really had any analysis on it yet.
I wouldn't say it hasn't had any analysis. There was a tension between taking things out and reflecting what people said. And again, the vision document is to, the intent of that is to reflect what people said, not inject our own views of what it should be. So there are some things, actually, we did take some things out, but maybe, maybe there's more that should be edited out. I'm not sure, but like I said, there's, there's some tension going, because like I said, we want it to be reflective of what people actually said.
Is there language in the document, excuse me, that addresses that issue? Question to both of you.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is there a language in the vision statement that addresses that issue?
If there is, it's probably not enough, and actually, I've been talking with the city manager about a more robust explanation upfront about what it is and where it's going and how it works. And maybe that, that culling, review, whatever you want to call it, analysis can go on.
My other concern is that I, and I, you know, we've talked about this before on a couple of occasions. I think that there is a ranking in the document. Things are listed, I mean, we went through and ranked them, and the results are, I believe, skewed on that ranking. I don't think they reflect correctly how people felt about certain items. And I'll just give you, the one example is the open house. At the open house, for those who weren't there, I think there was about a hundred people that came to the open house, is that?
Something like that. I think it's mentioned in.
About right. They were given dots.
Right.
To place on items that were of significance to them. And that's fine, until you give people unlimited dots. And then you have, as I witnessed, one woman put forty, forty, four zero, dots on one item. That isn't forty people that liked that, that's one person that said it forty times. So I, you know, I appreciate the difficulty in doing this kind of thing and in collecting information from various people at various ways, various times, but I do think that once you get this collection of ideas, that then there does need to be an analysis of what you have. And especially if you're going to feed that into a document, a comp plan review, that people will look at those ideas and consider those to be viable options for something that could happen based on the policies and the goals and the policies that are in the comp plan. So I would, I would like to see a little more work done.
I'm not sure where, where we have the ranking of ideas in this, in the appendix? Is that what you're talking about, in the raw data? Okay. But in the document itself, it does not, it does not try to do that at all.
But the appendix is the valuable part of this document, in my opinion. The appendix is really what people felt and thought, and it has a lot of information in it, some of which don't even make it into the body of the document.
So, so would you have us leave the number of comments, or people who made those, you know, the number of dots, or what would you have us do with the information in the appendix? Then leave it as it is and explain that it doesn't have statistical relevance? Or, you know, how would you suggest we deal with that?
Well, I certainly wouldn't, I'll answer you in the negative, I wouldn't suggest that there was any particularly scientifically based ranking of the information.
I hope we didn't do that.
And I don't, I don't think I would put, I don't know, maybe alphabetize them, so that they're not, so that they don't appear to be in an order of ranking of importance, because I don't think that the methodology involved in ranking those is sound.
And as I recall, you know, you were on the project management team, and when we talked about trying to do some statistical analysis, or whether that would be valid, you know, I think you were one of the people who said, you know, I, you know, I don't think that's the purpose of this study. Because we have had, as Richard pointed out last time, we did do in years past, a statistical random sampling where you can draw generalizations from the data you receive, but this, of course, was not that at all. It was, you know, letting everybody have an opportunity, or opportunity, as many opportunities as they want to express their ideas. So that's what we have.
Yeah. And the analysis I'm requesting is not a statistical analysis. You can't kind of retrofit data now to do that.
Not now, no.
What I'm suggesting is an analysis of sorting of the items, the items that have already been done.
And those out. And, yeah. And identify. Well, and Richard, we had the, we had the department heads, we gave them an opportunity, asked them to go through it and see if there was anything that was uncomfortable to them. Richard and I also did some, you know, going through, and we did talk about, you know, each item, and if it was something that was just totally inappropriate because it, you know, for instance, we need a new, we need a community college in Lincoln City, well, obviously we have one, right? So, and that had been a comment at one point, and that's no longer in here. Or we changed the wording a little bit to, to express the intent, but to try to make it more accurate in terms of, you know, what, what there is today, or, so, I mean, it's not that it's totally unfiltered, but, you know, I, if that's what you would like this to be, we can, we can do more to.
We can filter it further if that's what the, that's what the commission would like.
Well, I think, you know, we have a lot of plans that have, I'm sure, have, I mean, I wasn't involved in, the plans you listed are voluminous, and, you know, that's a lot of work, getting those together. I would think the first cut would be just comparing the list of things that are in the appendix with those plans and policies. Are they consistent? Are they inconsistent? I mean, that, you don't even have to compare them against each other at that point. I'm not as uncomfortable with suggestions being conflicting, as long as they're not conflicting already accepted policy, adopted policy, and procedures and goals.
Do you have an example, for instance, you know, you said you had a number of them, and can you just like give us an example of something that you think is like inappropriate to have in here?
Oh, no. I'll get back to you.
Yeah. I'm really putting you on the spot here, but I mean, yeah, it would be, it would be really helpful if you have a list for, you know, to share that with us.
And?
I just said it would, if she has a list, it would be very helpful to share that with us, so, not tonight necessarily, but so.
Thank you.
So when we, you know, go to look at, for those items, we make sure we hit at least those that have already been identified.
Here's, here's my goal. I would like to see this be of value, and I don't want to see the city spend a lot of money on these kinds of things and then not have it be usable in the future to be, you know, to feed into and to inform, like, the comp plan review or anything else. So to me, you know, it needs to be the best it can be in order to not sit on the shelf.
That's the goal.
Richard, I have another question. I know that you have stakeholders in this. Have they reviewed the document and have they given you feedback?
They've been asked to review it and give feedback, but the feedback we've gotten is all you have before you. Those four comments we got.
So none of the stakeholders have come back and said, we approve, we disapprove, we like, we don't like, we'd like to see?
Right.
Are you thinking of maybe our partners, like the school district and?
Well, you have a list of stakeholders in the document, and those stakeholders and everything I've ever done with those particular people, we've always had to keep them updated and had to work with them for approvals, as to, here's what we're doing, this is how we're doing it. You know, does this meet your, what you think is coming out of this?
Stakeholder map on page eleven?
Page, packet page is twenty-eight, it could be eleven, yes. And you have, you know, this chart?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. You have stakeholders, you have people that are, this should be very, very close to their heart.
We have not, for instance, reached out, well, the stakeholders are part of the general list of people that we asked for comments on, and we've gotten, like I said, virtually no responses.
And these stakeholders have also been approached for all the other plans that have already been approved, like the parks plan and the transportation plan.
Generally speaking, yes. I mean, where, you know, I mean, in, I can't speak for anything that happened, you know, more than twenty years ago, but, and some of these things are more than twenty years old, but, yeah, we, in all of these, we've always tried to have a really robust involvement process and review, where, you know, we have a draft and it comes up and we, people can, are asked for comments before it's considered by any boards, and then also when, if there's hearings on it, or at least opportunities for comment.
So in your review of the community ideas, was there any, did any of them sort of strike either of you as being, ooh, that's inconsistent with our parks plan, or, ooh, that's inconsistent with the approved transportation plan?
No, there was, there were a couple that struck me as they're inconsistent with each other.
Yeah.
But not necessarily with any, anything. And as was pointing out, there's probably some, I don't know if any of them have survived or not, that are just plainly illegal.
But those aren't in here, they weren't?
Well, I'm not sure that any survived, I think we took them out there, maybe, I'm trying to think about the one about the marijuana shops, if that survived or not, I can't remember, but, but we tried to take out things that were illegal, things that we've already done. I think at least some we took out, but I know there are some that are still in there that have been done. And again, there was that tension between saying what people said and, and just editing it down to be more, I guess, consistent with reality. And I was very leery of substituting our judgment for other people's.
Well, the other issue too, also, is that the folks that were approached in this project included not just residents, but also visitors to the city, and quite a few of them, and those aren't factored out, they're all sort of mushed in together.
Right.
And I would think that our parks plan and our transportation plan, really, the feedback we got on those plans were really almost probably a hundred percent residents of Lincoln City, or, no, some of them, yeah, they're farmer's market, if you got data there at the farmer's market, it could have been tourists.
Yeah.
market, it could have been tourists, yeah. It was a mix, yeah.
So, anyway, that's what I had to say about this, and I don't know how you want to proceed, if, if you want, we can come back on, I guess, October 8th, with a revised version, I guess it's not 8th, 1st?
Fourth?
Second.
Second?
Third.
Second, somewhere around there, possibly.
I guess I'd like to...
Although I'm not sure when our consultant's available, so it might be further, the main thing is, if you want to, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, if you could, you know, this was, is a discussion time for you all, and if, if there are other, or specific things, or if you can even be maybe a little more explicit about what it is you would like us to, how you would like us to change this at this point.
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
Because, yeah, we've been trying to, as Richard said, we've been trying to preserve it, and not necessarily take out conflicting things, or things that conflicted with existing policy, because this is what the people are saying. We don't want to be, yeah, so, you know, we're just trying to figure out what you'd like us to do with it.
Do you have a working outline for the general plan update, the comp plan update?
It's very, very general, it probably wouldn't be helpful to you at this point.
Why are you asking?
Well...
Maybe it would be.
I guess it's the professor in me, if, if you're trying to feed this information into a comp plan revision, I would think it would be helpful to know what you're feeding it into, so...
No, I would take the opposite view on that, is what we're trying to do is get what the people want, and feed that, and make the comprehensive plan address what people are saying they want.
Well, but, but what Deborah's asking is for specific instruction on what to do with this, and so, I'm, I'm suggesting that the value, I think, I don't know if everybody here is in agreement, but I think the value we see in this now is, is in feeding into the comp plan, making sure that the comprehensive plan reflects what people want to see the city to become. So, I mean, I know you, last time you mentioned it could be used by the county and others, but I think it's really a city document for, for our use at this point. And if, if this were organized around the outline of the comp plan, it might be easier to understand how it feeds into it.
Actually, if you look at the focus areas, that is pretty close to the different sections that will be in the comprehensive plan. It's on page seven of the plan, I'm not sure what page it is in your document.
Page seven, yeah.
And I think that it might be helpful for us to hear from you what you think of the, of the goals for each of these areas, and, and then the initiatives, and putting aside maybe the community ideas for right now, but the goals and the initiatives are, came out of, of the, all the ideas, the ideas just get way more specific. So if, if you could maybe give us some feedback on the goal statements and initiatives, then that would be a good starting place, don't you think, Richard?
It would be very helpful, yeah. So, those are the places where I think we did the most massaging, where it's, we tried to get the gist of what people were saying, and if based on your reviews of what you saw people saying, if you think we came up short or something, that would be good to know.
I'm going over my notes here, and I don't question the initiatives, it's just some of the ideas, I go, woo, okay.
Yeah, and I think, one of the most important things is to not focus on the ideas. They provide context, and it's, it's what happened, but it's not necessarily where we're going. As I said, we tried to get the gist of what people were saying, and synthesize those things into the initiatives and the goals.
Well, the snaps, the ideas are a snapshot of what people thought at the time.
Right, exactly.
So, are these goal statements, the goal statements in the general plan?
No.
They could be.
They could be, they will be in there, whether they are the actual goals that we end up with remains to be seen.
You know, I suggested the last time, I think I, myself, would find it of value, and I hope other planning commission members would also, to have maybe a couple of work sessions, before we really dig into working on the comprehensive plan, and addressing, okay, what are the goals that we want to make sure are in the comprehensive plan?
That's what I do.
Set up a system that we track, to make sure that we keep on track, and address those goals all the way throughout.
We will be doing that, definitely.
I think, Richard, if we made some kind of a statement that basically said that, yes, these are comments as were presented by the population, they are not necessarily at all objectives for our vision.
Specific action items that were necessarily...
Make the statement, and then, you know, that way we can keep people from getting too focused on the ridiculousness of some of them. I don't want to say that, let's say the misdirection of some of them.
The impracticality, perhaps, or something.
Yes, that's a good term.
Yeah.
So, how, so how, where are we now on this? I think one thing I would certainly like to see before it becomes, goes before the city council, would be to do a cleanup, do an edit, there are a lot of, some typos, some errors.
Yeah, thank you for your input on that, yeah, we've got your list.
And then, do you want to do the, proceed with, have it filtering done, too?
I, I would.
Pardon me, what was that?
What was it?
Some analysis or sorting of the items.
In the appendix, or in this?
Well, the community ideas are pulled from the appendix, right?
Right.
So, I mean, I don't, I was just trying to flip through to see if that one comment about marijuana stores was in here, but I can't...
I don't think so, because I have a hard word somewhere.
You know, and I, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but these are, the ones that were pulled into here as community ideas, were the ones that, through the process ranking, were the high-ranking ones, correct?
In part, correct, sure, the higher-ranking ones bubbled up more, but we also just did, just looked at them themselves, regardless of their ranking, about whether they made sense, we tried to combine several into one, so that we didn't have a list of thousands, where we, we only have dozens, or a hundred, or something like that. But once again, I want to specify, I want to really stress, those community ideas are not the most important part of this.
Right, so, so how about, and I...
Hold on, why not? You keep saying that, why not? Because I figure, like, the population of this town are the most important part of the town.
I agree, I agree with that, but what we gleaned from what people were saying was sort of themes, so, we want, let's see, one of the goals is, in part says, we want an integrated transportation system with improved connectivity for all modes of transportation. Okay, that's the highest level, that's the goal, is part of it. Below that was an initiative, they said, add more sidewalks and pedestrian connections. And there was, there are several items under that, the community ideas. Whether those individual ideas, each themselves make sense, the theme that we got from people was, we need more sidewalks, we need a better transportation system. So, the specifics of the ideas aren't important, aren't as important, at least in my mind, as the theme behind it, the general feeling.
Okay, that makes better sense, it just, kind of sounded like you were dogging their comments.
No, no, no.
I wanted to make sure that was clear, that you weren't.
No, and, because those are the ideas from those people, and other people have other ideas, and there's ideas, like I said, in the transportation system plan, to continue with this example, there's many, many, many ideas.
So, ideas birth the initiatives.
So, if, if you were going to redo the index, would you put, like, I almost had it there for a second there, you know, you've got transportation, you've got parks, you've got housing, you've got community, would you put, you know, viable, filtered, like, you know, okay, we get the general idea here, is this, this is what goes under here, so that people kind of see where these things go, or that we can all see more clearly, like, okay, so, instead of having this big packet that kind of says, let's go do everything, you know, where do we kind of, you know, filtering down so that we can start to prioritize what does go into the comp plan, and...
I have an idea.
Thinking down the road to where we're going to take actions.
Yeah.
But, once again, the comp plan is not going to have actions in it.
Right.
Absolutely not.
Okay, so, so how about this idea? How about this document becomes two documents? And one of them is the vision document, which is the goal statement and the initiatives, period. Doesn't have community ideas underneath it, it's goals and initiatives. That, to me, seems to be more directly connected to the comp plan. And then, the other document is the collection of community ideas, it doesn't get lost, but it's the more specifics that can be talked about during work sessions, or can be talked about as how to perhaps implement this plan, but separate it out so that it isn't...
Doesn't distract.
I think that's a good idea.
Doesn't redirect.
And what you were saying, Sean, is that the appendix then be organized by the ideas.
Yeah, it can still be grouped the way it is.
Yeah, essentially, yeah.
I like that.
Be a team.
So, could we approve this tonight with conditions?
Well, what, you're not, you're making recommendation, so...
I'd like to see it.
So, I mean, you can do anything you want.
Why don't...
This is America.
Let's have, let's have, is there further discussion, or do we want to start formulating a motion?
Well, I'd like to see a new written proposal that outlines kind of what we talked about, before we take any move on it.
Yes, I agree, I agree with you, Doug. I don't want to see a motion, I want, I'd like to see that the document be kind of...
Well, you may...
I'd like to see it sort of split apart.
You may want to have a motion saying that, so we don't have just, and not, not to be negative, or something, the idea of one, one planning commissioner is not a direction to us.
Sure.
So if we get a consensus, that would...
Okay, all right, I'll move, that this document, go back to the planning, oops, I'm sorry, Sean, did you have something?
I was going to ask one more question, because Richard seemed to get hung up there. You had a reason for keeping it as one, and I'd like to hear that.
Well, actually, it is two right now, because the appendix is a separate volume, because I didn't want the whole thing to get, to have a big, thick document with all the appendix stuff in it, so that's separate. My hesitancy is, I want to make sure we still have context for the, for the goals and initiatives, and I just want to make sure whatever we do preserves that context.
You could always refer to packet two.
Right.
Anywhere that's...
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, it's supporting information that allowed you to develop the initiative statements.
So, I kind of get a feel for what he's talking about, it's, we've created this document from public input, not, not, the planning department got pencil crazy some night, and wrote this up, and, and then we, you know, we had these other things, but we didn't really care about these other things, and so we have this document that was really out of the planning department versus, here's a document that has all of these public comments that, that really helped create the document itself, and we're not ignoring the public's input to it, that we might come across doing if we separated it out and, and put it in an appendix that gets lost in the shuffle.
Well, you can incorporate it by reference, and there's a lot of, I would not want to lose the text that's in here that describes how you got here.
Right, yeah.
I think that's important, so that, because, because you're right, I don't want them to think this is some, you know, Deb woke up at three in the morning and wrote this out on her own kind of thing, and I think that the description in here is pretty clear about the public involvement, and who contributed, and, and what was contributed. But I think from a vision perspective, visioning is a high-level look at, at what could, could happen, and I think the initiatives, the initiative statements go about as deep as they should for a vision, and then, aside from that, the rest of the information is, I don't want to see it lost, I want to, I'd like to see it incorporated by reference, and then available during the comp plan revision. That's, that was my thinking.
And I would hope that the public, when they read the initiatives, will see that their ideas were captured in the initiatives.
Yeah, I would hope so, too. Well, we certainly could do that, we have the goal statement, and then the initiatives, and then move on to the next goal statement, the initiatives. We could take those sort of distilled community ideas, and compile those, and have that be in the second volume, or appendix, or however we want to make that work, as, as a few pages, and then actually have the detailed information and the raw comments that we received after, after those.
Yeah, I think, I think we can come up with an appropriate format, and so on, I'm seeing a, pretty much of a consensus of where you want to go, and I think it, I think what Deb is saying is consistent with that.
Yeah, can you make the motion then?
Well, challenge is yours.
See, unless, unless Miles shouts us, shouts us down, we think we, I think we know what we're, we're supposed to do.
Supposed to do, we have the direction. And then, do you have any additional direction on any of the goals or initiatives where you want to tell us if you're comfortable with something, or not comfortable?
Not with the goals or initiatives, no.
You're okay with those? Anybody have anything on the goals and initiatives? Or the vision statement itself?
I mean, some of the introduction language will have to be revised, because of the changes you are making to the document.
Right, right, yeah.
But you'll, you'll find those, yeah.
You had wording, like, and I'll, I'll say one, because it kind of bothered me, activities and tractions for all ages, under that you had community ideas, under the initiative, provide more, or be a more dog-friendly community.
Uh-huh.
So I was like, is there a way to make that, I guess it's not really what you want to do, to be a pet-friendly community, you just want to be a dog.
Oh.
And I, and I guess, you know, that, if the goal is only, you know, to the exclusion of all other animals, it sounds really good.
Uh-huh, well, that's a good point, Gary.
I'm not exactly, you know, comfortable...
So, so your issue was with, oh, initiative number six.
Right, I, I didn't mean to get negative there, it's just, I'm a cat person.
Yeah, right.
And I know we don't make...
Oh, my, Gary, thank you.
I know we don't make parks for cats, I understand that, but we do for...
That would be an interesting idea, though, wouldn't it?
I think what this reflects, actually, is the fact that we got dog comments.
You didn't get any.
We didn't get cat comments.
No, we didn't.
We don't try to impose ourselves on people.
Or, or pet chickens.
You don't want to hear my views on that.
I know, I know, I, it just, it came across a little bit, and I get where you're coming from.
Well, I think the Bijou Theater got it right, because they're having a dog film festival one week, and they're also having a cat film festival.
The cat film festival.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, good, I'll go to one.
The gerbils are failing left out, though.
I just had to say something.
Okay.
Pet-friendly, maybe?
All right.
All right, so, anything more to add, or any more questions you have of us?
Well, if you do think of something.
Yeah, let us know.
Let us know.
You'll be the first ones to know.
And as I said earlier, I know our consultant is going on vacation, so I'm not sure, sure when she will be able to implement anything that, that we, any revisions that we make.
Is there money left to pay her to do that?
We're over budget on it, but we're, we're okay, we're, it'll work.
Okay.
You know, she may suggest, and I don't know what you think of this... You know, she may suggest, and I don't know what you think of this, cleaning, I know, cleaning up the typos would be great before we took it to council, but would you consider sending it to council with recommendations to divide it into two documents? No?
I'd like to see the-
You want to have it, okay.
Yeah. You agree?
Do that.
So is this in some super-secret processing program that you can't do the edits yourself?
It's, it's in a program that I don't have, I'll say that.
Oh, okay.
And, and, you know, it's, it's formatted, there's somebody who's formatted it, and it's, I think, it's much easier for someone else to do it than for us to do it. And I, and I don't think the changes will be that expensive to make, so.
The next sentence is, you're gonna find the money?
All right, so, I think we're, reached an agreement on that issue. Any old business to address tonight?
No.
Any new business?
Nope.
Any planning commission training?
No, I was gonna have some for you, but I actually reviewed it today and I decided I didn't like it, so, um-
We'll do it another time.
I thought the trainer was a jerk, so I just didn't, didn't bring it forward.
So we don't need a motion on?
No, we don't need a-
We don't need a motion, so, I've got a pretty clear consensus.
And any reports and comments from staff?
Um, I think Deb has something.
Okay, on Thursday, we are having a design day, this is for people to come and talk with us about the design standards we have in the code for commercial, and also, we're going to talk about commercial, or design standards for multifamily apartment buildings as well. And, um, on Thursday, we have a couple different events. We have, from noon to two o'clock at the North Lincoln County Historical Museum, an open house, so they can drop, people can drop in. We have some posters, boards up, some of it reflects what we talked about in the visual preference survey, we had a really nice turnout there in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, and we had about 40 people who were weighing and on different images. We'll have some of those same images, and we'll have, you know, some kind, some of the charts showing what people thought of those things, and then that will help us to spur more discussion with whoever comes in the door. So that's 12 to 2 at the North Lincoln County Historical Museum at 4907 Southwest Highway 101.
That's down in Taft?
In Taft. And then, and then the consultant and some of us will be going to the high school for a presentation and to hear what they think about design standards and the way buildings look, and streets look. And then at five o'clock to seven o'clock, we're going to move the open house to the Lincoln City Cultural Center, there's a couple events going on that evening, and we're hoping to capture some of the people going to those events, as well as anybody who wants to come, and that's, of course, at 5:40 Northeast Highway 101. So that is the day after tomorrow. Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, a couple things I should mention, just for your information, vacation rental dwellings, you know that the city council put a cap of 194 vacation rental dwellings in the R1-5 zone, and we have reached that cap, and we have started a waiting list. And, uh, we also, in the, in Rhodes End, the R1RE zone, you know, the council put a cap, which is, is 90 VRDs in that zone, I think there's 204 or something like that. But actually, we've started a waiting list too for that, because someone wants to be considered for a full-time vacation rental in Rhodes End, and, uh, so if the cap is changed, or if eventually we get down, or quickly get down to 90, then that person will be first in line.
Can I ask a question about that? Can someone apply for a VRD license before their home is built or while it's being built?
Yes.
They can. Does that need, do we need to change that, or?
But now they'd be on a waiting list.
They'd still be on a waiting list, no.
Well, actually, we have a couple of houses that are under construction where they applied before the cutoff, but any new ones, no, they couldn't, they'd just be on the waiting list, any-
Is there a time period, say if the house is not built within a year, that they, they lose their license, or that?
No.
Their position on the waiting list? Can they be, can they lose their position on the waiting list if they don't build the house?
Um, what we've been doing, you know, we've, we've just started the waiting list, and I think there's like one on each waiting list, or, there may be two on the R1-5 zone, I'm not sure. But, uh, you're on the list, it's just on the basis of, of the, the date and time when you applied.
So the, the cap has been reached for applications or for approved?
For both, it's combined.
Okay, so, so there's building, homes that are being built that have already applied that are in the cap?
Right, they applied before the cutoff.
Got it.
All right, um, future agenda items and next meetings?
I think the only thing we have is, will be, have a work session on the proposed sign code amendments. Those are actually scheduled for hearings at both the planning commission and the city council in November. I may add a couple other things to, to the, to the work session, particularly with regard to affordable housing.
And that's for a second.
Right.
Great, anything else? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.